Okay.
So, please, we're gonna get to the 2024 Budget Town Hall.
Okay, well, Paul, okay, for the Town Hall, I'm gonna turn it over to Alan, our treasure, and he's gonna take us through it. And if we could, please, hold the questions till the end, and we'll get through the presentation, and then open it up for questions. Thank you. Alan?
Thanks, Mark. And we'll post this on Connect tomorrow, or tonight?
The PowerPoint? Yes.
Okay, great. Welcome, everyone. Board meeting took a little bit more than I think we all anticipated, so I'll try to get through this as quick as possible, but I'm sure you guys are very interested in our 2024 proposed budget. Just quickly on the agenda, there's probably about 12 slides to cover. I'm gonna give an oldie but a goldie on the scope of the Country Club budget, because we have a lot of new owners either in the room or participating online. Just remind everybody, you know, kind of what Country Club covers, what it doesn't cover. We're gonna go right into a summary of what the 2024 assessments look like, and then you'll see some of the schedules you're familiar with, you know, kind of by unit type. And then I've got a couple of revenue expense charts, and then we'll walk through it by kind of major spend by vendor, so you can sort of understand where the money goes as part of the budget. And then we'll cover off on some villa-specific items. Sorry, my screen was blank. And then we'll talk opportunities and risks, and then there's an appendix that just has the financials by sort of expense type. Okay, next slide. So this is a reused one from past meetings. So this is basically just the pyramid of the community we live in. There's many HOAs. There's the Master Association. Hopefully, everybody participated in their budget Town Hall about a week ago. But when you look at the Master, it's all the main gates, security, Ramco, and it's the tennis courts, and they have a dog park that is more, I think, geared towards a retreat, but I think, you know, covers the community. But the Master, so if you have questions about gates or security, that's not us, right? What is us is obviously the amenities. The plaza you're sitting in here right now, which includes the two pools, obviously, the restaurant, the North Pool amenity. We've obviously got pickleball courts. We've got the gym in the back of the plaza here. We've got the bocce court, the synthetic putting green out here, a little croquet. I'm not sure if I've ever seen anybody playing croquet there, and an outside sort of gym facility. We've got the golf grill in addition to the restaurant up here, and obviously, the golf course is under the Country Club. And then also built into our budget are certain services. You know, we get sort of landscape provided to us. We get cable, internet, and phone, and then we get home security. And then obviously, just the overall administration of the community. And obviously, it does not encompass Oasis. That's a total separate, menor-run facility. And as the Master mentioned the other night, there's gonna be an option in the future to buy it, but the Master Board gets to decide on it. And that would include both the original Oasis Club and the new fancy water park, slidy thing. Next slide. So for anybody that wants to just, like, see the assessment and leave, this is the summary slide. So basically, for 2024, the assessments are scheduled to go up $67 for the non-villa units, and that runs roughly an 11.3% to 12.6% increase. Obviously, the 80 units have a smaller increase because they started off with a bigger base, and the 40 units have a bigger increase. But it's flat across the board because the one thing that we allocate out by unit type, unit size, is landscaping, and that, the first two years with United were a fixed cost. There's no increase. Next year, I think there's a 4% or somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, three percent.
Three percent, whatever. But for this year, nice and straightforward, everybody goes up 67 in non-villa units. In addition to that, we're not proposing any increase to the $45 Common Area Reserve Fund, so that's something that you had to pay every month. And that's staying static at 45, and I'll cover off sort of the rationale behind that. And no increase in the $75 Plaza Food Minimum, with the program remaining identical as it was in prior years. So there's the 75 monthly option, which expires at the end of every month, or there'll be a prepay option, probably due sometime in early to mid-December, where you can pay $900 upfront, and that would run through the entire year from January 1st to December 31st. Fred, we're gonna hold questions to the end. Thanks. You got a paper to write down?
Yeah, I will do.
From a villa perspective, the proposed increase is $81. I got a little asterisk because I'll come back to something Karen referenced. But basically, that's the $67 that covers the common area, and an additional $14, which is basically an $11 increase in their reserve funds. So they currently pay separate fund because the association's responsible for their roof replacement slash maintenance, as well as exterior painting. Last year's amount was $54. That's now increasing to $65 at the recommendation of the Villa Subcommittee and acceptance by the Board. There's other, again, because the Villa's a service area, you heard the discussion earlier about irrigation. So there's Toho irrigation. Unlike us, who have our own individual meters and pay Toho directly, association pays and then bills it back to the Villas, so that's a pool cost and a shared cost. And then they add things like irrigation repairs that are different than we do, so the head brakes, the controller, solenoid, all the other stuff that's involved in irrigation. That's, you know, billed to the Villas and shared across. And then there's one little thing that we're still working on. Again, because they're a service area and responsible for their overall costs, if compared to a prior year, actuals are better than budget. We owe them money back. If they're worse than budget, we have to assess them a little bit more. So we're still working to see with 2022 how that relates. And lastly, what Karen indicated is, because we are responsible for the roof repairs this year as a result of a hurricane that occurred, mostly a result of hurricane, there've been subsequent normal rainstorms that caused leaks, but we incurred about $60,000 of repair costs north of that, but in that ballpark, which we tapped into their reserve fund. So the reserve fund would have ended, you know, with a number, but it's gonna end at zero, so we're effectively starting over the reserve fund, which is why there's some level of increase from the 54 to 65. Next slide.
Before we move on really quick, I know, just for a note for the people online, because I am sharing my screen right now, we cannot see any of the comments that are coming in online, so those will be addressed after, after we're done with the presentation. Thank you.
Next slide. All right, so this will definitely be an eye test for the people in the room. Apologies for that. I'm not sure we can make it much bigger, but when you see it, when you see it tomorrow, or tonight, whenever it gets posted, by the very bottom of the screen is kind of where 2023 assessments were. So I'll just focus in the middle of the page. I'll just use the 50s as an example. The monthly assessment last year was 48. The Plaza Food Minimum was 75. The Common Reserve was 45. That totaled $538, or $6,456 a year. That's what basically we're getting billed. If you jump up to the 2024 proposed, the 418 has now gone up 67 to 485. The 75 and 45 has remained static, so now the new rate is $605, or $7,260 a year, which is basically an $804 increase, again, across the 40s, 50s, 60s, and 80s. Similar thing with the Villas, except for, again, that 250, that Repair and Reserve Fund, which basically is gonna generate $23,000 to front, to help front the cost of repairs before it's billed back. And we're gonna try to look to collect that either in one lump sum at the recommendation of the Subcommittee in January, or across two payments, January and February, 125 each. Sorry. Yeah, next. Okay, so now let's get into what makes up all these numbers. So at the very left top is our total revenue, right? So we're looking to generate about $4.3 million next year. Revenue representing about 55% of that, or about 2.4 million. Food and beverage across the two locations, 1.7 million. And then resale activities, that's the $2,000 we get on resale if we're budgeting at about 75 units. That's the revenue side of the equation. Then there's the expense side of the equation, which is just shy of $10 million, at 9.917. And you can see how it sort of splits out across operational areas, which is salary and benefits represents about 36%, or 3.4 million. Repairs and maintenance, now, in our repairs and maintenance number is where landscaping is, so a big chunk of that, $2.2 million, is our United contract. I'll come back, talk to special projects later, but that's items that, you know, it's a little bit of a contingency, but items that we will look to spend in the latter half of the year, assuming we're on or ahead of budget. Administration, 1.5 million, or 15%. And in that number is gonna be the bulk cable number as well. Property insurance, about 4% of our total expenses, $375,000. Utilities, that generally Duke and Toho, and then contracts, 1.6 million. So all that adds up, and I'm gonna go down in each of these categories and break out what the spend areas are. So when you take the revenue and the expenses, and then you sort of add them together, this comes back to the $5.5 million, which, which what factors into the assessment. So if you go back to that other page, don't, but there's 5.5, that's what gets divided among all the units, the 937 units. So, well, that comes out to the increase of 67, but like, for the 50s, it's 585. So again, if you look at that, now, this is now by what I'll call functional area, right? So HOA operations, and again, I'm gonna split that out in the next slide, but embedded in that is SWS, Spectrum, and property insurance, et cetera. The golf course, 944,000. Plaza amenities, oops, 389. Food and beverage, about 330. Homes, which again is entirely landscaping, so those are the units of 1.2, and the Villas is a combination of landscaping, Toho, irrigation, repair, and termite control. So now, get into more of the meat of the numbers. Next slide. Okay, so one thing that I don't think we do a good enough job understanding is some of the value that we get from the services. So again, you're gonna see this slide upper left is just a repeat of the functional areas, the net expense, and that's the $5.5 million that impacts everybody's assessment. To the right now is, in that $5.5 million, are services that the HOA has negotiated on behalf of all the union owners. And most of these are very long-term contracts, you know, 15 years, 12 years, 10 years, things like that. Obviously, United Landscaping is a shorter, but it's a three-year contract. So in that $5.5 million, there's United Landscaping of $1,004,000. There's our security of SWS, which is everybody's home monitoring, about $120,000, and the Spectrum bulk cable of 705, so totaling $2.2 million. In the lower left, then sort of broken out by, you know, again, the same categories, but if you divide it by 937 units, basically, $197, $198 out of your monthly assessments is covering services, right? So then the residual of that, if you take, again, I use the 50s as an example, the 485, so our amenities are costing us 287, right? So the amenities being golf, plaza, gym, pools, et cetera. And then what I did was, when I called Spectrum on one occasion, on the services market range rates, and I didn't use the word "low" or "high," I used "lower" or "higher." So if you tried to replicate as an individual owner with no sort of negotiated HOA contract, and you wanted to get cable, internet, and landline, or she might not want to get the landline, that's roughly about $99 for what I call a teaser rate. That's good for about a year. So, you know, if you didn't have a contract, on the low end, lower end, you're probably paying $100, give or take, and that assumes 75% tax. SWS, there's a bunch out there, Simply Safe, Ring Camera, et cetera. So you could probably get monitoring in the ballpark of 999. On the upper end, there's the ADTs of the world. You're paying 4999. So again, just to sort of price out market rates of these services. Same thing with landscaping. This one's a little bit harder because as part of our landscaping, obviously, includes the lawn cutting, hedge trimming, fertilizing, weed killer, mulch, palm, palm tree trimming, et cetera, irrigation checks. So we, yeah, if you just got somebody to come into the community to cut, maybe you can get $40 a month, or, you know, or sorry, $40 a week, or $50 a week, but to add all those other services would be a little bit challenging. Not to mention that, as an HOA, we would not want 937 landscaped companies coming through here, impacting the roads, the gates, the parking, all that stuff. And then on the upper end, again, I think you probably couldn't find somebody to do that, all that for $50. You're probably looking more like $60, $70. So that would cost, say, 300. And then for landscaping, common areas, like around the plaza, I just left as is. But if you just sort of, like, look at that, you know, market rates compared to what we pay of 197, you can pay in on the lower end, 328, or on the higher end, 622. So again, if you look at that compared to the 485, that gives you a very different perspective of what the amenities are potentially costing us. And then just as, as an aside, I reached out to some people I know in Solavita and the Legends. Again, it's a little bit apples and oranges, but on the lower right, so Solavita includes bulk cable and lawn care. I didn't have a, amenities are all over the place, and what they charge for different social memberships, et cetera, so I left that out. But their single and trail fee membership costs $6,085. So just the services, again, so if you compare the bulk cable and lawn care at 230 a month, kind of to our bulk cable and lawn care, we're below that other community from that comparison. I did the same thing for Legends. It's a little bit different because the Legends does not provide landscaping. They have to do it on their own, but they do bulk cable and amenities. They have a pool. They have a, I don't think they have a restaurant, but they've got pickleball courts, other amenities, similar. And if you do that, that's 242, and golf membership is $4,050. So again, in comparison, we don't look bad at all compared to those. So again, and I think we focus on the overall number. We don't think about the services that are included in that number sometimes. Next slide. All right, so now this basically further takes the key functional areas and breaks it out. So Plaza amenities are basically everything here, and the North Pool excluding the restaurant, right? Because that's in a separate food and beverage. So those amenities cost us $390,000, give or take. And if you look at, you know, upper left is kind of the summary, so total administration, total revenue, utilities, contracts, et cetera. So all these things are sort of broken into these, these broad categories, and I gotta put my glasses on for the side test on my screen. So if you look at the total administrative, 25 grand, that's our lifestyle amenities budget. So that's the live pool music, that's things along those lines to run our various different activities. And up above, we've got 15,000 of revenue. So it's a net cost of about 10 grand. For things like New Year's Eve party, we charge, but for other events, it's just a, a way to hopefully get people up to the plaza to spend money on food and beverage. So it's an expense in here, but hopefully, it's driving revenue on the food and beverage side. Our little lobby cake cup out there runs $3,000 a year. Florida, we pay the state of Florida for all our pool licenses, because they've gotta be licensed, inspected, et cetera. And then under utilities, that's our biggest expense here, is the Duke electricity to sort of run all the pools, pool heaters, all the plaza lights, everything. And we incremented that by, I think, 5% or 4% for inflation based on conversations with Duke. You'll see one of the risks later is, obviously, if they come in very different, that's a problem. If they come in lower grade, if they come in higher, not so good. Toho, again, that's all the potable water in the various facilities, plus irrigation, and then DirecTV is all the screens here that are normally on, NFL Direct, all that stuff. Then if you go down to our sort of contracts, and again, if you think about a lot of these in terms of what costs are controllable, arguably, Duke Energy isn't very controllable unless you turn off every light, every, you know, you don't put certain things on. Again, that's not gonna move the needle a lot. Our Central Florida pool is a contract, so that's locked in for a year, so that's not really a controllable cost, but that's what it costs to have, I think they visit four times a week or five times a week.
Six.
I'm sorry, six. Six, six times a week?
Six times a week.
Okay. To make sure we're in accordance with, you know, Florida standards, and we don't have to close our pools for chlorination issues or whatever. And then Stephanie talked earlier about, like, spray pro testing, have all our fire extinguishers tested, our AEDs, things like that. And then you come down to the repairs and maintenance. United, again, there's a contracted aspect to it, but then there's other stuff where if you have to replace trees, sods, irrigation, things like that is what makes up, you know, a lot of the rest of these. Anybody who's been here using the pool, you know that there's always pool repairs, whether the heater goes out, the control panel goes out, or the, you know, the hull or the shell needs to be repaired. So we put stuff in the budget for that. So that's kind of Plaza amenities. So again, that's a component of what your assessment is covering. HOA operations on the other side, $2.6 million. And again, broken out the same way. The revenue aspect up there is the resale, 75 at 2,000, and plus some miscellaneous other income. And then if you look at our expenses, under total administration, for 326, two of the biggest spends are computer support, so basically supporting all the computers here, plus our current POS system, and, you know, when there's lightning strikes or whatever, responding so that we can get things back up and running, so the golf shop can operate, et cetera. Spectrum and comms authority, that's our data center cost. So we de-risk our, our computer environment by moving it to the data center and out of the closet that was attached to the gym and out of the, the golf pro's office above his head. That's the cost of maintaining that with all the redundancies, et cetera. Our attorney, we spend about $55,000 annually, and some of that is collection related, and a lot of that is just general litigation, sorry, general legal matters, like final litigation. Yeah. 14's Yellow Dog, that's new, so that's our new POS system and the inventory system for the golf and the food and beverage. Our account for the annual audit and tax return, depreciation for assets we purchased historically, Pitney Bowes USPS, just our regular, you know, postage, and some of that is, is again, tied to a lease or a rental of the Pitney Bowes machine. Same thing with the next one, is printers, copiers, et cetera. Our property insurance, I just saw something the other night that apparently Progressive is de-risking and moving a third of their policies out of the States. They're gonna cancel a third of policies, but, so that's on the homeowner's side, but on the, on the HOA side, these continue to go up exponentially here in Florida. So we saw almost a 40% increase last year. This year, they told us to project a 30% increase. And I've also heard that it's very hard to get umbrella policies currently. So that process is starting. More to come of that, but hopefully, this is sufficient to cover it. Again, we talked about the gates. So while the Master runs the operation of the gates and has the barcodes and stuff, we pay for the Wi-Fi, we pay for the electricity. So again, every gate has to have Wi-Fi to be able to contact the gatehouse, and has to have electricity to open and close the arms. So that is a cost that we bear. Then if you look again down, sorry, under the, sorry, under the contracts, this is where the Spectrum Bulk and the SWS comes in, 700,000 and 120,000, and this is one component of the First Services Management fee, and I've got a separate slide on that, so we'll cover that a little bit later. And then under repairs and maintenance, the new CDD that we just, David Land, that we just approved for the addendum for the contract, that's an extra $90,000. The Master informed us that, you know, we'll be picking up gate repair likely going forward, and that's roughly about $25,000, would they estimate? Again, I think they're trying to work through all their historic bills of when things get knocked off, broken, run through, and getting it out to each of the communities that, where the gates, you know, physically reside. So that's what makes up your HOA operations. Go to the golf slide. So on golf, again, there's a revenue component, which we talked about a little bit earlier, $2.4 million, give or take. And then obviously, there's various expenses that, you know, add up to more than that, so a net sort of cost of golf of $940,000. So again, if you look at the vendors, the first one is various, because that's all the cost of consults. So that's the Caloways, the Nikes, the Provy ones, of anything that we sell in the pro shop. Osceola County, we pay property taxes on anything that generates sort of revenue. So interestingly enough, the North Pool, we pay zero property taxes, because that's an amenity, and in theory, that's built into all your regular property assessments. But for the golf course, the clubhouse, and for the restaurant and the plaza, we do pay property taxes. We added this year $75,000 into the budget for marketing, advertising, and this could take the form of an individual or spend to try to drive that revenue to go after the $600,000, I think that Darren was referring to, that hopefully we can get. Turned this award, that's just a pass-through. It's up in the revenue line. It's in the expense line. Card point is our credit card processor. So every time someone uses a credit card at the golf course, we pay around 3.5% give or take. And then you've got office supplies and various other things, electricity and utilities. So again, big, big charge there from an electricity standpoint. And then Ethan runs all his machines. He needs fuel, so that's the fleet wing. And then Toho for the various irrigation. And again, we have a Spectrum business phone. This is another example of a bill that actually the Master was paying on our behalf, that they're still working through to finalize, but this is something that we budgeted for, because it should be coming our way. And then if you look at our contracts, the biggest one there is our, we use a company called Huntington to do our leases, Tennessee equipment, this is the leases of all Ethan's equipment that he uses on the golf course that we don't physically own, but we lease, as well as our golf carts and our GPS system in the golf carts. So again, a very sort of fixed cost across multiple year contracts. Another aspect of the First Service Management fee, waste management, our garbage hauler, again, under contract, three separate contracts for the various locations. Syntas, we have uniformed cleaning for Ethan's crew. We've got ice machines down there, both at the restaurant and in the cart facility. We have leases under those. And then if you go over to the repairs and maintenance, again, most of this is related to the golf maintenance side. So this is fertilizers, this is chemicals, soil amendments, things like that, that keep our golf course looking so great compared to many others in the area. Next. And then food and beverage, kind of same thing. So again, that's roughly $331,000 overall cost. Our biggest component, as far as what's in the administration, is our food costs. I use US Foods because it's our biggest supplier, but there's a ton of other ones. There's ones that supply our liquor, our beer, et cetera. Card point, again, credit card fees for when things are charged up here. The last component of First Services Management fee under contracts, we do have temp labor here, because, you know, if a dishwasher quits or something, you know, you need to fill that immediately. So we do have temp labor built into our budget. Various linen, laundry, cleaning services, again, waste management to get rid of all our garbage. We have paper supplies from US Foods, et cetera, janitorial supplies to keep everything clean, and away from health inspectors. And then again, special projects I'll talk about separately. And again, just a split between the Plaza and the Golf Grill up in the upper right, so what the revenue is between those two components and what they, you know, end up netting from a cost perspective. Next slide. So then one of the things that you, I referenced a little bit, that First Service, this often comes up, as far as what the fees that we pay them, we break it out into three different tiers of components between food and beverage, golf, and general admin. But the total adds up to 196069, and the reason it's a really odd, you know, not round number is the STT cost for time locks built into that, that is minor, but I just threw it in there as well, which represents 2% of our total HOA expenses. And then just by comparison, our previous Icon contract was $260,000, and the Master shared information where, under there, right now, they pay $350 per door, basically per home. And they've got 3,097 homes across the Master, which is Country Club plus retreat plus condos, and that totals $130,000. It's a little bit apples to oranges. They don't have a restaurant in the Master, they don't have a golf course in the Master, and their budget is only $2.8 million compared to our almost $10 million. So again, just to get comparisons of where, where fees are between managing companies. Next slide. I'll turn this over to Stephanie while I take a quick
break. You can take a break, Alan. So we were asked to share the organizational structure from First Service and the organizational chart. So you can see it here. So the way that our community is built and per the contract that we have with the association, we have a general manager and a property controller. Both of those positions are equally at the top of the chart. And then you can see the various, so under the, so the property controller is kind of like a freestanding role that oversees all of the department's financial functions. The general manager oversees the department heads, the HOA manager, the food and beverage director, the head golf pro, and then the golf course manager superintendent. And then you can see just down the line who those positions manage. So under the HOA manager, we have the Lifestyle Director, who manages the Event Coordinator, and then the HOA manager also manages the Admin Assistant and Front Desk staff, as well as the Maintenance Staff for the community. Our Food and Beverage Director oversees the sous chefs, who oversees the cooks and all of the service staff in the restaurants. Our Head Golf Professional oversees the Assistant Golf Pros, the shop staff, and the Golf Operations staff, and then our Golf Course Manager oversees all of the Golf Course Maintenance team.
And just rough numbers, I don't have them off the top of my head, but best majority, I wanna say 60-ish are full-time, and then there's probably about six or eight part-timers, mostly on the golf course.
Yeah.
Although I think it might be one maintenance.
We have one part-time.
Janitorial person.
Yes, janitorial.
What's that?
Almost positions that do.
Almost all those. I mean, there are some open positions. There's Open Starter, Open Part-Time Starter. I think we might still have one open.
Yeah.
Um.
One cook and a group member on the evening.
The group member on the evening. And just to, so there's this, we obviously, so the employees are our First Service employees, but it's basically a pass-through cost to us, so we pay for their salaries, their benefits, their overhead. What's included in the management fee is all the stuff outside of that. So like, Christina as Regional Director, Robert is the Regional Food and Beverage Director. We obviously, you know, get their HR support, they've got their connect system, they've got their online.
Payment for, like the.
Well, yeah, it's click pay. What's the one where you help that, well, not help that, but like your, what do you manage it for? Why can't I think of it?
The resident portal?
No.
Customer Care Center.
Customer Care Center.
That's it.
And obviously, you know, general ledger package, all the back office support as far as accounting, all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of the magic for that one. And obviously, we pick up the, you know, none of the employees are ours. We pick up the payroll costs related to that. Next slide. Okay. So then, you know, what makes up that sort of $67 or the bulk of that $67? This is really just last year's budget versus this year's budget and what are those variances? What are those changes? And I've broken it up between Common and Villas. Again, the Villas isn't, doesn't move that much, but we'll talk about that in a second. But on the revenue side, you know, based on our latest estimate, the food and beverage should, you know, generate more revenue in 2024 compared to 2023. We're being somewhat conservative, hopefully, on golf compared to last year because we're trending down year-to-date. And we think we'll, we'll end up down for the full year. So year-over-year, we're down about 86,000. And then HOA fees are again up because of the resale. Oops. So then if you look at the next section, again, broken out, so administrative, again, what drives that 161,000? We've added 75,000 in marketing for golf. We've got a new POS system, our fixed asset depreciation, and we put a contingency in. Now, technically, I think it's, it's just a, in a different section because last year we had 30,000 contingency. We're about 26,000 through that this year. And this year we put in 30,000 contingency. So we kept those the same. So I'm not sure why, thinking about it now, there's a variance here, but it's probably because it's on a different line. The property insurance, again, that's because we had a shortfall in what we budgeted in 2023 compared to what's actually coming through, plus what the budget increases for this year. Utilities, that's a, the reason it's going down is we've done an inflationary increase, but we did have some things that we were paying on behalf of the CDD that we've now transferred over them, light poles. And we actually just recently received a refund check of $49,000 going back about two years, give or take. So that was a nice little win. And then when you look at the contracts, anybody who knows the history of the golf lease, we originally had a few number of golf leases. The hurricane hit, there's a facility, and it was going to come later, it was going to come in April of this year. We had the ability to take it, you know, four months earlier, about a few more carts. So that's the full year effect of the additional carts. Plus, we have a new beverage cart and a range cart, I think with a cage, hopefully, so that people picking up the golf balls don't get hit. Again, we had a temp labor because we've incurred that this year. Refresh us some of the maintenance equipment under me. So we've got a bunch of machines rolling off and even hopes, I think they're going to be here by the end of this year. So those will just be a slight uptick in that. And then other, we have some new contracts, like the one we approved earlier, things like that. Salaries and benefits, I think it's about a 6% increase overall. So in there is an increase of 10% on medical, and I'll talk about that in one of the risks. Budget and merit increase, there's a couple of market rate adjustments. We find sometimes when people quit, we need to, in order to hire that role, we need to increase the salary we're paying. And then any open roles that still need to be filled. And then under total repairs and maintenance, landscaping, again, that's the new $90,000. The master gate repair is new. And then we've got supplies and janitorial, Plaza HPAC, and we've actually added a hurricane recovery of $10,000 because a few years ago, when we had to clean up brush and debris, we didn't have a budget for that. So we put that in as well. And then I'll talk about special projects in a little bit. And then on the Villa side, miscellaneous utilities, that's just an inflationary increase on Toho. And then the contracts, that's just aligning, it's a little bit of a decrease, aligning with the termite contract. And then the repair fund we talked about, plus we put in 4,000 for irrigation repairs. So that bridges the gap between what effectively what makes up the $67 change year-over-year. Next slide. Okay. Pooled reserves. So we actually have a reserve fund with funds for the common areas. So we'll end the year close to 500,000, might be a little bit over. We're actually earning interest on that money. So it might take us north of 500,000. And by the end of next year, we should have close to or north of a million dollars. And there's a little Excel schedule I put together. I listed out everything that was in the engineering study. There's, I think, like 70 different rows. I just cut out a couple of things. But as an example, you know, golf course bunkers, phase one, generally the engineer sort of said, usually you don't repair all your bunkers and all your greens and all your stuff in one year. You spread it out over, over three years. So you take, you know, holes one through six or, you know, seven through whatever. Currently, they estimate, you know, useful life was 20 years. We have nine years left. The cost was 145,000 back in 2022. We're inflating that by 3% a year. So that will, you know, come due in 2030, 2031. But if you look at some of these other gray areas, that, that's when the engineering study said those expenditures would come, come to fruition. So next one, like the golf clubhouse exterior paint, basically they say useful life is seven years, three years remaining. So in 2026, we have to spend 14, 15,000. Obviously, we have to go out to bid. Maybe paint's cheaper then, maybe it's higher, but this is the, the best estimate at the time of what that painting would be. As you can see, anything in the gray drops down to that expenditure line. So we're building it every month by the $45. And then anything we're going to expend out of it. And it was interesting because we just spent like $600 grinding some sidewalks that were uneven. But they actually have, in the engineering study, every year spend about 3,000, 3,300 for sidewalk, sidewalk repair. So it's just interesting to sort of see some of those things coming to fruition. There's no real major, so the reason we kept it at 45 was, you know, we use an inflation rate, earning interest on the money, but there's no major spending until like year 2032. And as you can see, it grows, you know, basically 500,000 a year for the next, or for every year until we actually spend, I think 2030 or 2031, we spent a million dollars based on the engineering study. And really, it's a boring decision, but we probably should renew that engineering study every three to five years, just to make sure it's refreshed and that we have everything covered in it. But barring any unforeseen, we're very, we're much happier now. We have some money in the, in the reserve analysis and the bank account. Next. So this is just specific to the Villas. I'll go with this pretty quickly. But again, we talked about this. The utilities is Toho, that's irrigation. And I know there's a meeting tomorrow. Contracts, that's just your termite control. Again, individually, I pay for my own termites. It's actually more expensive than that. I, you can divide it by 92. And then repairs and maintenance is a combination of the, was the repair fund that we're creating, plus that is where your landscaping charge is. So again, you can see down below. So Toho, home team, United is your landscaping, HOA, that's the 250 we're going to collect, and then the irrigation repair. Next slide. So on your reserves, again, that will be zero at the end of this year. And then using $65, that will start to increment up by roughly 72,000 a year. Again, they've got a similar lifecycle for the painting, seven years with four years left. So in theory, in 2026, the exterior of the Villa will need to be painted. Again, we'll go out for bids, one will have to make a decision, remember the board is the time, in conjunction with the Villa Subcommittee, if the painting is warranted. You know, some places last a lot longer than seven years. Some places don't make it seven years. But again, this is designed to, you know, have enough funds in a bank. So when those things come due, it's on a special assessment. And again, the other thing that factors into this a little bit is because you got your roof issues that are part of the 558. If there is any settlement, we will, you know, tweak this down the road. Next. So last slide is opportunities and risks. So these should be pretty standard. But obviously, our opportunities are capabilities in the new POS system to drive revenue, marketing opportunities, and from a cost perspective, we can break, break even faster compared to our existing POS. Can the marketing spend generate additional golf revenue? We hope it can. We talked about the golf policies and enforcement and trying to ensure that people are not abusing the system. And then cost-saving initiatives. One of those ones is, if you remember, I talked about the data center and the IT infrastructure. That was a de-risk situation based on the untenable having the servers in a room with water right above them and 85 degrees. But as we move to a cloud version of POS system, we're going to look to revisit that and see if we need that same level of redundancy, cost, et cetera. On the, on the risk side, revenue, obviously, opportunities is revenue upside. But on the risk side is if there's revenue misses, elections and delinquencies, and thankfully, when our ask for a payment amount, that might be a good indication. Healthcare benefit adoption rates, only about a third of the first service employees currently take healthcare, but it's ballpark 10 grand a month. Sorry, 10 grand a year. So again, if more people take it, that's not factoring into the budgets, but we've done it based on historical adoption rates. Inflation, again, Duke says they're going 5%, but over Sunday go up 9%. That has been passed on our overall budget. How we finish the rest of the year matters. So again, if we start to see a, you know, a deterioration in revenue or a higher expenses, that obviously has a, has an impact as well. And then obviously unexpected events and costs. So kind of cookie cutter stuff, but you know, some of those are specific. And then as far as the appendix, and I won't go through these, but this is now basically those same sort of areas, HOA operations, plaza amenities, but just by the actual expense accounts you'll see on the monthly financials, et cetera. So it's just a, a different cut at that. And with that, I will pause. And the board will take any questions you might have.
So I am going to stop sharing.
Yes, you can stop sharing.
So we can see the, see the people.
Great detail.
Thanks.
Thank you. So should we start with questions in the room?
Let's do online.
Online, okay. So I'm just going to read them. Is the ability to pay tax and gratuity from the monthly $75 going to return ever? If not, why?
So it's not going to return January 1st. I think we will revisit that once the new POS system is in place. One of the challenges is there's, there's different processes related to tips between the golf grill and the plaza currently. So you have to work through those kind of issues. And we don't want to add another variable into the mix of a challenging timeline to get it deployed January 1st.
Somebody mentioned that there should be copies available of this PowerPoint. We are going to send this out to the community tomorrow. So everyone will have a copy of it.
How did you come up with that? Because you have different lot sizes.
That's important.
He was talking about the different lot sizes.
Yeah, but.
Yes.
You're talking online. Can you please mute yourselves?
For the Villas, we're going to get an increase of $81 a month.
You mean it would be 81 or an increase of 81?
The increase is $81 plus.
Oh, no, let it, let it go because this is very interesting.
It always is, Aaron. It always is.
Why the hell would I hide?
I think recorded too.
What is the cause of the $67 increase? I think we went over that. 51% of our costs are in salaries and admin, question mark?
I think it's 36%.
36%. Inflation is a major cost of, cause of our increase and lack of workers in central Florida, agreed Theresa. But there is also an erosion of any excess operating cash flow from prior years, hence the need to approve the release of our reserves in the prior meeting. $3,000 for coffee.
Cake cups are not the most economical way to serve coffee.
Our assessments will be, will soon be the same amount of our mortgage payments. We need to know what is being done to cut costs and make living here affordable. We may need to choose between paying the HOAs and putting food in the fridge. HOA fees are like insurance premiums. They never go down. Why do we pay Wi-Fi for the gates and the North Pool? $12,000 spectrum, should give us that for free. Gates are on Wi-Fi. What were the, how many, how many staff members are there in total? Alan, the six-ish full-time staff with.
FTs are like 62, but I think there's close to 70. There's like 16.
Yeah, we have about, yeah. Do we have a reserve for road repairs? What is our road repair strategy?
So I'd have to go back and look. There was a component. I mean, there's clearly not a, a reserve for repairing a mile. Like if you had to sort of build this from scratch, that's not in the reserve study. And what I'd have to check, I don't know if, because the CDD put the infrastructure in and we obviously pay a CDD fee. I don't know if like, if, you know.
If a road.
Maybe some seal coating.
Maybe a manual seal coating. That's, that's, but in other words, if you had to like, prepare like five miles of, I don't think you would, if you had to grind it down and like do the whole thing over, that's not, that's not anywhere. Like, I don't think we could afford to do that. But hopefully the roads would never need that level of, of maintenance or redo.
And then other than that, just some compliments for you, Alan. Excellent detailed graphics. You are critical. You are a critical member.
Thanks, everyone. Questions in the room?
Any questions in the audience?
In the future, can we get this a day in advance? Because those of us who are here cannot see and.
Yes, we will work to. Yes. Yep, I agree with that.
Did not hear that. We didn't, we didn't hear that.
Oh, so it's basically, can we get this a day in advance of the town hall? And I, yes. If I don't win Powerball, if I'm here and I'm like, if I don't win Powerball, I will commit to that for next town hall.
So just for everybody's information, so this was just a town hall presentation. So you could come and see what the proposed budget is. We are having the budget, the actual budget meeting where the budget will be approved on November 13th. And there will be a 14-day notice.
It's the 20th.
No, that's the board meeting and the special meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So we will be sending out the 14-day notice by mail, or if you sign up for electronic notices, you'll be getting that via email. But the meeting is scheduled right now for November 13th. And that's where the budget will be finalized and approved.
Right.
Are you still paying for those positions?
When the actual.
Oh, no, no, we don't know. So one of the reasons we've got some favorability to our current year actual versus budget is because there's, like, the general manager's not currently still.
Do we have an actual versus budget that will be in? I couldn't.
No, not in here, but next board meeting, like separately. So I did this, that kind of.
We get that, yes. Before the November 13th, can we see what's going to happen?
Yeah. So that was, so in November, we'll have September's numbers. So I could do an actual to budget for September.
It's still, yeah.
Yeah.
It's better than not.
Yep.
It feels sweet. So are you, are you continuing with some more stuff?
In what sense?
Your presentation.
No, no, no. My, my presentation is done.
So can I, can I just ask you a question about the August financial statements?
Sure.
Like you have, like, all these cash accounts, cash account, one number two, 162, 168, 168, people's, cash money market, 100,000. What all these cash accounts?
So, so.
Wait a minute, you've got a little bit more here, restricted cash. You have cash reserves, cash reserves, 168, you expect 225,000.
Yes. So, so there is a variety of cash accounts. So we're required to segregate the reserve. So you, the Villas has a reserve cash account and the Pooled has a reserve cash account.
And who happens?
The common areas. So like the.
Why does it say, but it's like to me, but it's meaningless. Whatever this description is, I don't know what that is.
Yes. So that is a, that is, well, so we leverage a standard chart of accounts that first services uses across all their properties. So where we really, really, really need it, we ask for like changes, but then it creates a new account number and things like that. So, but yeah, I look at those too. I mean, I know them because I work with them. Yeah. So there's, there's a main operating cash account. There's a food and beverage cash account. There's a golf cash account.
Why can't you say, why can't it say on here? Just what you said. And now I, oh.
Because that's a PDF and I don't have the ability to change that. I can.
But you know what the same thing is meaningless. If I go and look and I want to know, okay, what kind of cash account that goes?
Yeah. So you just got to look at the overall cash and that's the one you.
You don't want to change it?
It's, it's hard to change, let's put it that way. Because we need all the, so like there's a beautification account.
You don't want to change it.
There's a beautification account for golf. There's a beautification account for Plaza. There's a series.
Maybe, maybe you could put out just a little thing at the top that says, you know, make a statement that says.
A key.
Each one has.
A key. Like a map.
Right.
So, yes.
I just have to kind of do it.
No, no, I'll have to a key. I'll have to a key.
Go ahead.
How long have we had reserves? Were they down to zero at 1.2?
So this, January 1st of this year, we started reserve, right? Because Lennar didn't put any reserves away. They're not required to by law, right? I mean, their view is we spent, they built this building for 3.5 million. They'd have to start paying for it again if they built up reserves. So we had no reserves until we started charging the $45 January 1st of 2023. But because we have 937 homes, if you do the math, that gets to basically $500,000 a year.
Absolutely. Also, we own our roads.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, is that CDD owned some or the HOA owned some?
I believe the HOA owns them. You know, do you know that? HOA? Okay. But like the, the sewers, that's.
Sewer, water drainage system is owned by CDD.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So then a question I have is, I used to be on HOA where we own our roads. If a sewer fails and it, you know. If a sewer fails and it, you know, the road tears, who is paying for that? The HOA or the CDD?
That's the CDD. Anyone who pays.
Okay.
I think if it's a sewer failure, the CDD.
But we currently don't have any reserves for the roads.
There's a component, but not like catastrophic failure of a road. There's not a reserve component for that.
There is.
But there's a component for like resurfacing and things like.
Are these roads, now, I know I'm on one of the original streets, is it really truly like somewhere two thousand and ten, two thousand and thirteen, these roads were built?
The first house in phase one closed in twenty fourteen. So their infrastructure was probably in a year before that, so twenty thirteen.
Yes, we have time. Yeah.
We should have a lot of time. We should mostly be dead before those roads go, I would think. I'm hoping the roads are a hundred years. That's what I'm saying. I'm hoping a hundred years.
There might be a little maintenance here as a total failure.
Got a question on the part of the HOA that goes with home security systems. Are we locked in as like a contract that's.
That is a contract.
Something to follow on before it expires.
So, so the question is, are we locked into our southeastern wiring, southeastern wiring solutions, security monitoring, which basically is nine ninety-nine per door? Yes, it's a fifteen-year contract. And we're eight years in, maybe. Because if you read it, like, I'm thinking, the way I read it is, is it starts when the last home is wired, completed or whatever. So since Lennar still owns a parking lot or a home, it may not have started. But, but it's either eight years or we haven't started the clock yet. But, but, and, and there is, well, again, this was, again, when you think about Lennar, they set it up to run for a long time. And, and there, there's, there's breakage language, but it includes fees. And I believe the wording is, we have to provide access for them to come and remove all their equipment. So I, again, we're not, we haven't pursued that. But that could mean nine hundred and thirty-seven homes, come and take your panel off, any other things. So. Well, that's interesting because in theory, I think they were required to have.
They need to use the same.
Facilities, should look into that. Because. Like any. Okay. What's your address? Eighty-five nine four.
This has been discussed.
There's just, we don't work, right? Because, because.
No, we don't have it.
They don't have it.
They don't have security system at all?
No, not at all. No, five, no, nothing, nothing.
I'll check into that.
Is cable the same way as.
Cable is, yeah, we, that was reading, I was sharing it like years ago, but it would, they didn't change the duration. That was another fifteen or eighteen-year contract. Yep. But if you look at that slide, in theory, we're getting a great deal. Now, again, we all choose landlines? Probably not, because there's female services and Wi-Fi. But, but when you look at what you get for, you know, your, your three boxes, you're going to get forward, you get your DVR plus your ancillary cable boxes, plus the Wi-Fi at three hundred or four hundred megabits or whatever. So, and again, it's the only, only game in town, right? It's not like, and I guess you can't Elon Musk's satellites potentially. But there's not a lot of other options. It's kind of monopoly, right? So if we didn't do it from a HOA perspective, you'd have to do it individually. That is more expensive.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have, I called Spectrum when Disney and ESPN were out, and they, there was a fifteen-dollar rebate that was happening at the time. I inquired about it, but they said because we paid our HOA, that the HOA has to inquire about it.
Yep.
So that may be nine hundred homes times fifteen dollars that we can get back.
It wasn't. It's because it was a bulk contract. We did get a rebate that was credited to our, one of our statements. For the, I don't know what the exact amount was, but we did get, receive a credit.
If I'm not mistaken, it was about two dollars and twenty-five cents.
So it wasn't the full amount.
Because again, they're assuming you're paying the two thirty-nine, you know, so as opposed to the negotiated.
But there was something new that came out of that as well, that we're supposed to get, I think ESPN plus and Disney plus after that. So is that going to be something that comes to homes?
They, they spoke about it in the statement, but they didn't give a launch date for anything.
I'd be getting paid for those.
Do we have any other questions?
I think that the launch date was further.
Is this your first year on board?
January first, yes, I joined.
Are you an accountant by training?
Of course.
I was a treasurer of any two, I suppose.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you for coming, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great job, Alan.
How much you guys get paid per hour to do this?
I lost a couple of beers or something out of it.
Alan, I'm Jackie.
This is my wife.